Hello, we're gonna start the meeting, please. Have your seats. Yes. We'll find out in a minute. So, would you please call rule?
Mayor Loa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
And Alekhan.
Here.
Commissioners Fragasain.
Here.
And Betts.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tim to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but the question is, where's the flag?
Oh, is it hiding up?
Oh, it's hiding behind the pew.
We couldn't see it. If you could all please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could do a moment of silence, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, we will be closing the meeting in the memory of President Jimmy Carter. And we also are concerned about four people who have already lost their lives in these fires, as I understand, five now. It just keeps moving. So, and we have a moment of silence to recognize those things as well. Thank you. And do we have a cute critter video? Okay, there's a great need by some of the animals over at the shelter that need a family to go to. So I hope that someone or more than someone will be inspired to go over there and take a look. All right, so. City Clerk, please acknowledge the observances for the month of January.
City of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observance, Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 20th.
Okay, Martin Luther King coming right up. And now 4.1, there's a presentation of Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025, and there's a little bit of a change in the way we're doing this.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, General Sampson, Director of Operations. So I am here this evening to present you with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. This represents a significant achievement for the city. This is the 34th consecutive year that we have earned this award. It represents the commitment of the council, our city management, and staff in meeting the highest principles in government budgeting. So in order to receive this award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. We were judged on a variety of criteria in our budget book. We have about probably close to 400-page budget document. It is a collaborative effort put together by all of our city departments, city management, that represents the budget and the initiatives that, with your guidance, we strive to achieve throughout the year. So with that, I'm pleased to present this to the council. I have this document here. You are more than welcome to come down and receive it, or I can leave it with the city clerk.
Just go down. Great, thank you. So, General, though, without your leadership and professionalism in your office and your team, we wouldn't be doing this. And you've been leading us now for a few years, but this has been going on for 34 years. And that means that the city of Palmdale and its residents can be assured that there's transparency in the budgeting and the way that we collect money and the way it's dispersed. So thank you so much. Thank her. Okay, so if we could just have a clerk, please play the public comment code of conduct and read the public participation statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public participation on Section 6, which is the Joint Consent Calendar, Section 7, the regular CC Consent Calendar, and Section 8.1, Appointments. Now's the time for public participation. We have for Item 7.5, Michael DeSano.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael DeSano. I wanted to comment on Item 7.5, moving the city council hearing times. I just wanted to comment that I think that makes sense, just to conduct business during business hours. It's a business event for everybody. We often have supporters coming to support projects, and they have to stay out late when the meetings are late in the evening, and it keeps them away from their families. So I know that they, as well as myself, would appreciate, you know, doing this during business hours and also enabling us to travel during business hours, off-peak hours, so they're not caught in traffic and things like that. And then I know that also, when we have projects, most of the public participation is done via letters, and so that would still be enabled, and we still kind of coordinate with that with our public outreach before things. So I would support this and hope you guys do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Diana Love.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. How are you? Happy New Year. I am not in support of the change of the ordinance. I think it's very confusing to the members of the community, and I also think it's very inconvenient for people who are working, especially those who work down below and have to travel back up to the Antelope Valley. So again, I am not in support of the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Joshua Christensen.
Welcome. How's it going? My name is Josh Christensen. I'm a representative with the Carpenters Union and speak on that 7.5. If it were to get changed to business hours, can we at least have a phone call option to, like the gentleman said about, you know, getting projects through during business hours? At least get a phone call option to call in and give testimony for support of those projects. That would be great, so that our members can call in while they're still driving up, you know, up the 14 freeway. We got, most of our members work down in LA for a good job, and that'd be great to be able to support those projects through phone call. If not, then at least give some kind of option. That'd be great. Thank you much.
Thank you.
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Welcome.
Hello, Ms. Mayor. Well, the Antelope Valley Press of January 7th quoted Mr. Curley. "This will allow the city council, staff, businesses, community to conduct business during standard working hours instead of late into the evening, which could negatively affect health and well-being and lead to decisions being compromised due to fatigue." Now, that is the biggest piece of fiction I have ever read since, and I'm a fan of Raymond Chandler. You know, just as Councilwoman Bettencourt said last meeting, people have to pick up their kids at 3 o'clock. Do you realize that? Do you realize that 63,000 Mexicanos, Latinos, poor people live in the city that would have to pick up their kids at 3 o'clock or make a choice to come to this meeting? This is a very selfish decision on the part of the council. I don't care if you change it to Tuesday, but to change it to an earlier time is totally unfair. As one of the previous speakers spoke about business, business people, big business people, can meet with you guys after hours, anytime, you know? They don't have to come here to the city council, and I'm sure they conduct those business on their own with you, through the phone and through texts, you know? But us, the community, we have to come. You want us to come at 3 o'clock just for your convenience? Just so Mr. Curley can get on the freeway and go to Orange County and get into some pajamas before 5? This is where it comes from, you know? Mr. Curley, who did away with the Human Relations Committee, now wants to do away with the community participation in this. This is totally unfair. You've got to think about the community, not just of yourselves. You know, we're the working people who vote you in. You should be able to listen to us. Is that unfair for us to come at 5 o'clock and talk? You know, do we have to change our whole schedule to make it okay from you? You know, it's not fair. Just look into your conscious and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane. Diane.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The Antelope Valley is known as a commuter community, and a large percentage of the Palmdale constituents commute down the hill, thus making three an impossible time for participation in their local government. As they are at work, they would not even be able to go online to watch what is going on. 5:00 PM is really not a viable time either. If you look at our local school districts, West Side's open meetings begins at 6:00, Palmdale's at 6:30, and the Antelope Valley Union High School District at 7:00. I believe for improved participation, the later the time, the better. Please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle. Michelle.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello. I oppose the time change. I think it's inconvenient for people even working locally. I work locally, and I don't get off until 3:30. So people who actually want to participate in the meetings cannot. I think it's a bad idea. 5 o'clock's a little too early, too, but you know what? It is what it is. 3 o'clock, absolutely unacceptable. So please, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Gago.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. William Wallace once addressed a group of Scottish nobles by saying that "You think the people exist to provide you with status and position." I think that the peoples, that your position exists, pardon me, I think that your position exists to provide freedom for the people. He was describing a kind of arrogance and hubris that should never be tolerated in a public servant. I've read the staff report for the proposed ordinance 1649, and while it mentions a need to conduct meetings more efficiently and the possibility that earlier meetings might result in less fatigue for the council members, what was conspicuously absent is any mention whatsoever of the impact that this kind of proposed time change would have on the ability of the citizens to attend these meetings, where their elected officials are doing the people's business. The very point of holding a public meeting is so the public has the opportunity to attend while this business is being conducted. I don't know whose idea this was, but it smacks of the same tone deafness that William Wallace spoke of so many years ago, and it's a reminder of why there is a constant need for oversight of this body. I speak today as a resident of Palmdale and the leader of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. While the day of the week for council meetings is inconsequential to us, starting times that are earlier than what is currently being observed is not acceptable. Whomever is responsible for this suggested ordinance, you forget yourself and your relation to the people you have sworn to serve. I strongly encourage you to revisit who it was you were elected to serve, yourselves or we, the people. This change that we have now that we start the meetings at 5:00 PM, we were told some time ago that there was a survey that was done. My real collection is it was among city staff. You didn't ask the people, and I've never seen the survey. Do the right thing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Fernando Dutra.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Fernando Dutra, representing RDR Development. By the way, congratulations on that finance award. That's a big deal. The public should know that not all cities get that, and you should be congratulated, you and staff, on that work. I'm here in support of staff's recommendation for changing the date and the time. I think that, you know, we have a substantial commitment in the city of Palmdale with the Ritter Ranch project, and sometimes it's problematic to get all of our really top-notch consultants down here at that time of day, at that time of night. And not only that, I think it's also problematic for some of the employees also. And from a development standpoint, a business perspective, I understand the reason why staff is recommending it. My night job, as many of you may know, is I've been a city council member in my own city now for 16 years. I'm also Vice Chair of LA Metro, and you know that we hold our meetings during the day. A lot of the subcommittees that I think that many of you may represent from your city are held during the day. AQMD is held during the day and some of the other agency meetings as well. And so the reason for that is, I think, because we want focused, you know, participation, and we found that during the day, people make the best decisions. I know as a city council member, I've had my own meetings until 1:00 AM, right? Sometimes even a couple of meetings that went till 2:00 AM, and I don't know that we make the best decisions at 2:00 AM, even though we have to do that to represent our city and our constituents. So I thought I'd give you a perspective from both sides. I know you'll make the right decision, and my job was to come up here and give you my opinion, and good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, there are no more speaker cards on these sections.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. And with that, we will go to, oh, is there?
Hours changing? Yes. Yes. Foremost, I would like to congratulate Honorable Richard Loa to be our mayor. I'm wearing good hands with you and city council. Hello, Austin. You did great. I'm absolutely opposing the change of hours to earlier hours. What you're saying is all the retirees and unemployed people are welcome to come. All the people who are working so hard going to LA, law enforcement, all the professionals, they're going to be denied from making public comments. At 3 o'clock, it's not possible. What, 5 o'clock, we can make it. So I'd appreciate it if you reconsider it. Bring it back to 5 o'clock hours so we can all participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, with that, we will move on to item number six. Commissioners, would you like to pull any items from the joint consent calendar?
6.1, please.
What's that?
6.1, please.
6.1, as pulled. And I think that's the only item there, so we'll go ahead and have staff make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Council. Item 6.1 is to approve a master agreement with Good Guard Security Services, which will execute agreements with the Housing Authority and the city of Palmdale for the next three years with a not-to-exceed amount of $2,858,000 for the Housing Authority and $7,429,000 for the city of Palmdale.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher, for that report. The reason why I pulled the item was specific to the local hire provision or lack of provision. So in the staff report, it says that the contractor has set a goal to recruit and employ from within the Antelope Valley, but when I reviewed the two master agreements and the sub-agreements that are enclosed in our binders, I didn't find any actual term in the contracts that requires them to uphold a mandatory minimum threshold of local hire. So wanted to get your thoughts on how, if we were to enforce local hire or monitor their goal of hiring locally, how would we do that without an actual provision in the contract setting forth some sort of specified threshold?
As far as the agreement, I don't have the answer for those terms, but I can confirm that to fulfill this contract, it requires 55 to 60 guards, and they have already hired 35 locally to work this contract. Their goal is to have local employment to keep them off the freeway. It's a good model for them as well, being in Chatsworth as it is for our community.
Okay.
So they have hired 35 of their 55.
And that's great news. That's new, because I was inquiring before the meeting. So thank you for getting that information. I think that's helpful. This is $10.2 million worth of our city's dollars, and it's over a course of three-year term. Is there a way that we can at least require some sort of reporting on an annual basis on their local hire requirements?
I can request that from them. Our staff can monitor with them. I don't know what the legal requirements to require them to, but we can absolutely work with them to obtain those.
I'm fairly certain that we are within, you know, all power and authority to require reporting of their workforce, and if they can just designate how many are from the local Antelope Valley region, I think that that would be helpful to inform us, that they're continuing to comply, and we hold them in high regard as an upstanding contractor.
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Bettencourt, do we speak?
Yeah, I just have a question. So is this amount similar to the previous company that we had?
It is. It's slightly less.
Okay, good. And honestly, for this amount of money, I don't see why they wouldn't provide us a list of all of our local hires. So if we could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council wish to address this issue?
No, I would just say, yeah, maybe we get a semi-annual performance evaluation with information about who, you know, local hire and all that. But if not, I think this is a good agreement, and I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, now I believe we have to do it in two motions.
Yeah, it's just the one item today.
So one is going to be, this was going to be a vote by the Housing Authority? So, okay, so Commissioner Bishop, you're making a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second.
Okay. Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Very good. So I thank the Housing Authority Commissioners for being here. And now we will entertain a motion for the city council on the same item.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar as comprised with 7.5, adopting version number two of the ordinance, which will keep the meeting starting at 5:00 PM.
Wait, no. I'd like to pull 7.5, but I think we need to take an action of the council to adopt the contract first.
Right, the city council portion, which is A9190, so we have a motion to...
We have a motion. We have a second. I think it was by Mr. Olson.
Wonderful.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Very good. We will move to item seven, which is the consent calendar. Is anyone on the council wishing to pull any items from the consent calendar?
7.5, please.
Motion.
Yeah.
Is there any?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Give me a second. Give me a second. Anybody else wish to pull anything else from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to accept the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to accept the balance.
I'll second.
Second, okay, very good. We have a motion now, a second.
Start voting. Motion passed unanimously. We will move to 7.5.
Okay, could we have a staff report, please, on 7.5?
A council before you this evening are two options for reorganizing the council meeting times and dates. One is before you for Tuesdays at 5:00 PM. The second is before you for, excuse me, Tuesdays at 3:00 PM, with the closed session beginning at 2:00 PM.
So if we don't have discussion, I'll move for the second version, which is 5:00 PM. Which is, okay.
There is discussion. I mean...
Just a second. Just a second.
Get us to where we are at now.
Okay, so we're making, there's a second by Councilmember Bishop and a second by Councilmember Olson. We can have discussion. Does the motion include keeping the day on Wednesday or moving it to Tuesday?
It's moving it to Tuesday, but keeping it at 5:00 PM.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that item?
There is.
What's that?
There is. I'd like to...
Well, go ahead.
To have discussion. So a couple of things. In the option two of what's been presented to us, there is no provision for remote participation. Even though we're keeping it at 5:00 PM, I still think because we are a commuter city that, as been noted, there are people who are traveling, commuting on the 14 freeway at the hour of 5:00. I've heard time and time again that 5:00 is still too early. I'd like to see if we could get some council consensus on opening up the opportunity for remote participation for our council meetings.
Is there any further discussion on this item? All right, call for the question.
No further discussion? Okay, well, if nobody's going to support the remote... Okay, well, if nobody's going to support the remote participation, I also have a question on, with regard to the language of the ordinance that's drafted.
We have a motion and a second, and question's called for. Can we have a vote, please?
No, I need to, I am entitled to...
Madam, councilwoman?
Discuss a separate item. You cannot cut off council discussion when I'm not done discussing the language of the ordinance. There is a provision in the ordinance that sets forth that on election days, the council meetings, because we're moving them to Tuesdays, that on election days, that the council meetings will automatically be adjourned, be canceled, not held. But the provision in the ordinance doesn't specify which election days. So is it our Palmdale municipal elections, or is it also Lancaster municipal elections? Because they have their elections in April, does it account for state, federal? I mean, it's just blanket election days. There needs to be specificity on which election days. So yes, there is additional conversation that needs to be had about the language of the ordinance as presented.
Very good. Is there any further conversation on this item? Seeing none? Call for the question. Please let's vote.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Very good. We'll now go to item 8.1. And I'd like to make a recommendation that all committee appointments stay the same except for these three that require changes. That's for the City of Palmdale Investment Oversight Committee. One member must be the mayor per the investment policy. And so that would be myself as the mayor and Councilmember Olson. The other one that needs to change is Los Angeles County Sanitation District's number 14, taking number 14. Again, the mayor must be a member as a delegate, and the alternate would be Councilmember Bishop. And then for District 20, the delegate must be the mayor, so that would be myself. And then the second director would be Mayor Protem Bettencourt, and the alternate director would be Councilmember Bishop. And then the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District, we have Councilmember Bishop, and that expired in October 2024. The recommendation is that we have Councilmember Bishop continue in that role. Is there a motion to accept this as stated?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none? Call the question.
One more.
I'm trying. There we go, sorry.
Motion passes.
Very good. So now the city managers' report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and public. Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a safe one, and our thoughts are with all of the fire victims as they continue to fight and the first responders. We have an art reception through my eyes, a visual journey of recovery and renewal, happening on January 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Palmdale Playhouse. We have Journey USA performing at the Playhouse as well on the 10th and 11th, the Foreigner Performance on January 18th. And if you would like to get out and get dirty, please join us for our Day of Service on MLK Day, Monday, January 20th. You can volunteer in many different ways throughout the city. You can contact Saves for additional information. Two other items of note that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. The California Contract Cities Association held a press conference yesterday in Sacramento encouraging a swift enactment of Prop 36, but to do it in a fair and equitable way as well. So all of the contract cities have come together to support Prop 36 and its rollout. So I want to call your attention to that, and please educate yourselves as you see fit with that legislation. And then even more exciting for us, actually, is we were notified yesterday that we are the only city in Southern California to receive a raise grant for the grade separation at Rancho Vista Boulevard in the amount of $25 million from the federal government. So we know how important Plant 42, its contractors and all of the employees are there, and the efforts that we need to make to make that road safer for everyone that travels it. So a grade separation, for those that don't know, is an overpass at Sierra Highway in Rancho Vista that is currently 95% designed. Now, we just need the $100 million to pay for it. So we're a quarter of the way there as of yesterday. So I thank everybody that worked so hard on that and council's leadership for that vision. That's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number 10, non-agenda public comments. Do we have any cards?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
New Year's Day, our 300-member apartment house got a very unpleasant surprise. Our landlord raised our rent $169, which you could imagine is a very significant economic pain to all of us. And so I once again urge the city council to enact rent control in this city so that people like myself are not rendered homeless. My second point is that regarding President Carter, in 1968, there was a massacre in Vietnam called the My Lai Massacre, in which 504 civilians, Vietnamese, were massacred and killed. Their bodies were mutilated, girls as young as 12 years old were raped, and the culprit was William Kelly. Well, when President Carter was governor of Georgia, he made it a point to honor William Kelly, make it a state holiday. So that should also go into his public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
We have Robert. Robert?
Welcome, sir. Hello, first time here. You guys all do a great job, all of you, okay? I watch all these other cities across the United States, and they're in chaos, just chaos. I started watching Palmdale. I've been living here in Palmdale for 35 years. So after watching the chaos, I said, I want to see how Palmdale's works. I've been watching it since, unfortunately, I started watching back in July of '23. But I commend all of you, okay? And you need something, someone that goes against the grain once in a while, okay? But all of you do a great job. I did want to bring up the dump situation. Chiquita just closed down the first of the year, okay? I noticed we have more refuse trucks coming up the 14. And how do I find out how much tonnage this dump up here is taking in every day? That's what I like to know.
Okay. Who can answer that for?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but we, I can talk to Waste Management, and we can find out.
I'm fairly certain Waste Management has public, it's on their public website.
Councilwoman, we'll go by recognition from the chair.
Well, they, they used to be restricted to a certain tonnage, okay, a year.
They did get a legislative variance to be able to bring some of the Chiquita Canyon pollution, not pollution, trash to our landfill.
But it's not just coming, it's, sorry, but it's not just coming from that area. It's also coming from Riverside area. It's coming from Santa Clarita. Some of the San Fernando Valley stuff is coming up.
That is correct.
I know this because I was brought up in Sun Valley. We had dumps everywhere in our city, okay?
There's an exchange of goods, so every truck that comes in full leaves full. And we can help you with additional information.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for keeping it at 5:00. I'm retired, but it makes it easier.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Edith Roman.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna finish off what I have left last time because you don't know what I want to, you know, talk about. Okay, let's go back to the 47.8 millions illegal alien are not here to seek asylum, okay? They were told by Joe Biden to come to America and promised them to give them free education, free housing, free grocery, okay, paid by the taxpayers, okay? So it is absurd that Joe Biden did not punish them, but reward them with a path of citizenship. I just wanted to remind you that two months ago, over 77 millions of U.S. citizens have voted to deport all the illegal aliens, and it is a mandate that this must happen. Come January 20th, on behalf of 159,907 Palmdale residents, want this body of city council pass a resolution to give ICE agent fully assistance when they come to Palmdale to deport all the criminal illegal aliens. Any government member who resists the mandate of 77 millions of people is considered violating Title VIII, U.S.C. Code 1324, for aiding and abetting criminal fugitive. We have had enough of our government willing nearly to break the law and illegal aliens come into our country to commit crimes, raping, robbing, killing, okay? So we are so sick and tired of it, okay? So we want them to suffer consequences, and we, the people, want to take our country back. Thank you.
Yul Gavargas.
Thank you. Real quick, I appreciate them mentioning Jimmy Carter. I was born and raised in Iran. I was 22 years old when I left in 1971. Trust me when I say Tehran, the capital, was like Paris, like Monte Carlo. The girls wore miniskirt in late '60s, if you recall. And I used to play the guitar in the streets of Tehran, long hair. It was really beautiful country, thanks to support of the United States and United States Presidents. This went from Eisenhower into John Kennedy, and John Kennedy sent Johnson, his vice president, to Tehran. I was there. And the United States always supported Tehran and Shah of Iran. It was, he was rock of Gibraltar. He kept the Middle East in control. Saddam was saying, wouldn't dare messing with Iran, and Middle East was at peace. And here we come, when Jimmy Carter came in 1979, 1980, the revolution, so-called revolution started. He supported Ayatollah to go from Karbala-Najaf, Iraq, into Château de France. And French people, the prostitute mentality that they have, excuse me, they took their France, 747, into Tehran and destroyed Iran. Then we had 52 Americans held hostages for 444 days. And God bless Reagan when he says, you know, they are a bunch of kidnappers, and I'm going to deal with them, just like Trump is doing today. Don't mess with America. And Jimmy Carter, rest his soul, he was a very decent man, Christian, truly a good man, but a lousy leader, just like what we have right now, except this one really is not a very good person either. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Michael Ross.
Welcome.
Yul, you're so heavy. Love that guy. You know, I'll be very quick. I just wanted to say to you guys, congratulations on the Christmas stuff out here this year. It was spectacular. I believe that Palmdale can be the pearl of the Mojave, and I thought that that was a great step. So I just want to say congratulations. It looked great. It was handled perfectly, and we had a great time. So I just want to say thank you. If you ever put that together, I know Carrie's back there, I know she has something to do with it. But congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have Roger Soderstadt.
Welcome.
Oh, I gotta follow this stuff? Yeah, I initially became interested in civic affairs because there was nothing good on Netflix. However, since I've been attending the meetings of this august body, I found it's even worse than I had feared. It's a veritable den of iniquity. And yes, that's a Star Wars reference. Anyway, many years ago, when Mr. Bishop still had a full head of hair, we discussed the Ritter Ranch project. And the critics of this project said, well, there isn't enough water. Okay, now that it's back from the dead, at Halloween, of course, there's no mention, is there enough water? I listened and listened. I've looked at all this stuff, and I didn't see any mention of it. And we're in the midst of possibly the worst drought we've experienced in a good number of years. Maybe we ought to think about this stuff a little bit, huh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no more speaker cards for this section.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I've spoken to several of you about this already, so forgive me for reiterating, but I wanted to make it public. In the waning days of 2024, our governor got the California Air Resource Board to vote on a new fuel mixture, which is going to result in, my understanding is, a 62 cent per gallon increase in gasoline at some point this year, and there are more benchmark additions as the years go forward. We pay more for gas in California than anywhere in the country already. Palmdale, as you well know, is a commuter city. I would like you all to think about the damage, financial damage this is going to cause to families here in Palmdale and the Antelope Valley as a whole. What I'm asking for is, you know, I've asked everybody at PFC to contact their elected representatives and complain about this, but I think it would go a long way if this city council would pass a resolution, sending a letter to the governor telling them that this is exactly what we don't need. This is not helping citizens in California. It certainly hasn't, isn't helping anybody here in Palmdale. This needs to be put aside. It's absurd. I don't believe it's even, you know, intended for what he says. I think he's trying to get everybody off of gasoline-fueled vehicles, and that's really all there is to it. If you could then would get other cities through the League of California Cities or whatever other contacts you have to pass similar resolutions, imagine the impact it would have if we had 40 or 50 cities in California sending such a message to Sacramento. Now, I don't believe any of you get up every morning thinking, how can I do something that's going to hurt my constituents? But I want you to think about what this is going to do to us, and you have an opportunity to really lead by sending a very strong message to Sacramento. This is an abhorrent idea. It needs to be stopped. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I want to, I want to...
Well, you've already spoken, ma'am. I'm talking about anyone who has...
I want to talk about the gas.
Yeah, but anyone who has not yet spoken, please, I appreciate your support on that. All right? Hearing that, then we will move on to number 11, council reports, announcements, and requests for future agenda items. And I'd like to take the opportunity this time to speak first on this, and then after that, we'll start on my left here, and then we'll move all the way across. And the reason is, I am very appreciative and honored and humbled, really, by taking on the role of mayor of this great city. And we want to bring great accomplishments to the City of Palmdale in this 2025. The first one that I think will be of great significance, and I hope and believe that staff will give us a direction and the energy and the resources necessary to bring this about. And that would be the, essentially, making the City of Palmdale and the heart of Palmdale, which in my mind is Palmdale Boulevard, and the Civic Center, to bring those items about that are already in the works. So that would include working on the Civic Center, which I believe is underway. So we'll have a new Civic Center in this year, the Chimbole Center, which was unfortunately burned. Thank you, Captain, for being here. Is also being worked. The essential part of this, I believe, is that Palmdale Boulevard, which, thanks to Assemblyman Carrillo, who was a member of this body, and the governor having approved it, the city will transition to take control over Highway 138, which is Palmdale Boulevard. That is local control. And that's significant in the sense that for many years, our central part of the city has suffered indirectly or indirectly because we have no control over Palmdale Boulevard, and now we are taking the steps to do that. So from State Highway, from the freeway 14 to 15th Street East, we want to prioritize that, beginning with a comprehensive plan for the development of the 56 acres that the city acquired recently, which is at the corner of 14, Palmdale Boulevard Division, and it goes over to Avenue Q. And that is a great incentive for the interest of the city becoming a jewel and an announcement that what we develop there will have an effect on the rest of the development of the city. We are also working on rebranding. That means that we're going to take steps to publish and announce and attract people to the City of Palmdale. I don't believe that we're doing enough in that regard. I hope the council supports that. And what I'm referring to specifically is that we have thousands of people moving out of California, specifically Los Angeles area, and overlooking the opportunities, the many things that we offer in the City of Palmdale. things that we offer in the city of Palmdale. And I believe that if we did a campaign of bringing people, instead of them going to Nevada, or Arizona, or Texas, or Florida, or wherever else, we have homes that are being developed here. We have industrial segments that are being developed here. New buildings are being built here. We have, Trader Joe's is a great example of what's happening in the city of Palmdale now and what's going to be coming to the city of Palmdale. But we do not advertise ourselves in that respect, as we ought to do. And I hope that that is something that we will also be implementing this year. The high-speed rail and the High Desert Corridor and the Bright Line coming from Vegas is all going to come here into the city of Palmdale. This is where the transportation-specific plan is centered. This is something that will inevitably come here. It's going to come here no matter what. And it's going to be slow. It's maybe in the lifetimes of many of us, we won't see it. But this is something that we need to plan for now, and it's going to be something that is going to make the center of the city of Palmdale flourish, which is something that I'm looking for, and I hope that the rest of the council as well. The second initiative will be the Parks Initiative, that we will work on bringing about Yellen Park, Oasis, the expansion of Drytown, as well as Marie Curie. We're going to have the establishment of the concession stands there. I think this has been in the works for almost three years now. We have many softball players and other sports that come to the city of Palmdale, and they don't have a concession stand to go to. They have to cross the street to go over to the Vonn Center to get refreshments. We're going to resolve that this year. And we're going to address the issue of Quinones Park, which is over on 50th West, and in terms of beginning the design for what's going to happen there. So a Parks Initiative. We, essentially, I kind of spoke ahead of myself as far as the rebranding, because that's basically the third item, which is to promote the city of Palmdale. We are, in what they say in real estate terms, we have location, location, location in Antelope Valley. We are right here at the very entrance to the Antelope Valley, and I believe that we intend to turn this into a real jewel. It's already a magnificent city, but we can do much more to enhance it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Bishop. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And before I say anything else, thank you so much for your leadership in the last year. I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, it's largely in part being surrounded with a good team, a great team, a great council, and bringing people together, because that's what I believe good leadership is all about. And we really overcame some challenges in the last couple of years, but I think we're on a good track now, and I think the staff is doing better than ever. We've got great department heads. We've got a great Parks Department, and we've got great community events to look forward to this year. If anything like we had last year, this year should knock your socks off. But thank you very much for that. I wanted to bring up the tree lighting. As far as last month, for my informational report, last month, our tree lighting ceremony here was really spectacular. We've never had something like that here before in the city of Palmdale, and we're really starting to show the holiday spirit. And I actually had people that I've never heard from before that took an interest in local government, saying, hey, we saw the videos. We actually came out and went to Poncelant Square, and it was really something cool. It's like, that's the kind of stuff that cities should be doing. So from a younger audience, people I never heard about, local government before, they came to me and they gave us praise. So job well done. There was a lot of good stuff in December. I hope everyone had a happy and safe Christmas, holiday season, and New Year, and I'm excited to be here and still be at City Hall, ready to serve my community. So looking forward to four more years.
Thank you very much.
That's my report.
Councilmember Olson.
I want to address your point of all those topics that you brought up. I want to, again, thank Assemblymember Carrillo, because he gave us a couple of tools. He gave us the ability to work with Caltrans to relinquish Palmdale Boulevard. And again, there's major improvements that need to happen, and that's still in negotiation. The bill allows them to relinquish. It doesn't require them to. So we're still in negotiation so that Palmdale doesn't put itself at an economic disadvantage. But the other thing is, the citizens of Palmdale trusted us with their tax dollars in approving Measure PD. And I think it is my commitment, and I'm sure that my colleagues join me, to make sure that every dime of that is reinvested in this city. The taxpayers will reap the benefits. And if we're going to do that, we're going to clean up and we're going to build. We're going to build Palmdale. So I want to thank the Assemblymember for giving the tools to do it, because this is a long time coming and completely necessary, and I share in on that vision. As far as my informational report, I'm continued to be blown away by our staff, our Public Works Team and Maintenance Crew that helped with the Parks Department to pull off that tree lighting ceremony. But just as equally amazing was the jolly holiday at the amphitheater. To see the kids sled down that hill on real snow was amazing. Kids in the Antelope Valley don't get that opportunity, and because of our staff, they did. It was amazing event. So thank you, Parks Department. Thank you, Public Works Team, Maintenance, anybody that had their hand in that. Our finances killing it. Everything's coming up Palmdale. That's what I'm trying to say.
Eric was going to sled, but he was too big for the sled.
All right. All right. Mayor Protem Bettencourt.
Hello. Happy 2025 to everyone. We made it. Yay. We have a new administration coming into the White House. We'll have new financing options that will be coming available to the city. I didn't attend a lot of things in December. I was really busy with grandkids and things like that. But I do want to make a request that we talk about the gas hike, Rhonda. So if you could maybe talk with Rich. I know that we have taken some steps already, but then when I talked to you about the League of Cities, there were some issues with other cities, like Berkeley, that like electric cars and that type of thing. So I just wanted to let you know that we have acted on this and we'll try to move forward with it. Really, that's all I have. So keep it short and sweet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Aldercole?
Happy New Year to everybody. Just to dovetail on Mayor Loa's sort of highlights for what we anticipate in 2025, two issues. One, a transportation project that I'm not sure I heard you mention. The Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence is a project on the east side set to deliver approximately 114,000 jobs, direct and indirect jobs, and infuse a significant amount of business dollars into our community. When we invest in those transportation projects and we move those forward, the people will stay here, the people will come, because we all have mortgage-paying jobs to deliver for them. Secondarily, with regard to parks, I failed to mention McAdam Park, which is in the heart of my district. The largest investment in its history is going to be made, over $6 million there, so we're looking forward to that. That's going to be adjacent to Together California, which is the transitional home for youth in the foster system. And so that's an exciting project. We're also $2 million in Dominic Masari, the lights. We had a lot, in 2024, we had several kids, soccer teams, moms, families come and advocate for lighting. And thanks to the city team, we are now investing $2 million in lighting, permanent lighting at Dominic Masari, so we will keep our kids safe there. So I just wanted to mention those as inclusive of our transportation work and our Parks Initiative. Two other things. One meeting that I had that I think was fairly instrumental in December, met with some folks that were working to submit, has already submitted a grant application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to establish an Antelope Valley Environmental Justice Collaborative. And the goal there is to access millions of dollars to address water quality equity issues, specifically in disadvantaged areas, which my district is, you know, there's a larger concentration of disadvantaged areas in my district, but there throughout the Antelope Valley. And so that's an exciting opportunity, and I'm hoping that we are awarded those funds. And then secondarily, the Kicks for Kids was a phenomenal event. That was our second Kicks for Kids event. A thank you to Salva, to LA Care, Trinity Harvest, Penny Lane, everybody. There are folks in here who donated shoes, everybody who volunteered. Thank you all for your efforts and your contributions to that event. It was overwhelming. Over 1,000 kids were served with toys, holiday gifts, holiday, and of course, winter shoes. So thank you to all of those who supported that event and who participated, and for the city for supporting it. That's it.
Sorry, I didn't write my notes down and I forgot, but I want to say yay on the lights in Poncelant Park. But what I miss, Mr. Ross, is the classical American Christmas, the caroling. Do you remember that? I used to love that, and I hope one day we can get that back with you. Okay, we'll talk. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the overpass at Rancho Vista. Not only is that going to be a great thing for the aerospace workers, but it's going to increase public safety. Our fire and our sheriffs will no longer be stuck behind those railroad arms coming down, so they can respond to emergencies much faster. So it's been needed for decades, and I'm glad that we're finally going to be able to get it. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Did we mention the parade?
No.
The parade was amazing. Bringing it back to Palmdale Boulevard was a huge success, and I look forward to more of that. That was great.
No, I'm pretty sure. We had the giveaways at Saves, the baskets, those were great. We had Senior Day and then just regular day. Those both went very smoothly. Air Quality Meeting, the Playhouse mural was really something to behold. You got to look at it from a step back, because it's that big. But don't get in the street, though, because I realize, like, the only way, it's so big, you just got to look at it from across the street. But we're continuing with the mural program in the city of Palmdale, and if you're seeing some more color on the walls out there, that's why. Local artists are encouraged to go out there and spread their art, and the city's supporting that program. But I also wanted to talk about that Raze Grant, that $23 million. That was the result of our Washington trip to DC last year. We advocated to multiple agencies, but we got $5 million from Garcia's office, and then we got $23 million from the federal government from those two meetings we had. And that's why it's so important to make sure you go advocate for your city outside the city, so to speak. And that was one of the reasons to move the meeting to Tuesday, is because a lot of those conventions and a lot of those regional meetings and League of Cities and SCAG and all, it takes place Wednesday through Friday. So when we, we used to always have the meetings on Tuesdays, but we had to move it for another council member, so we're just moving it back to the day it was. So this works better for those types of meetings. So for some clarification, why it went to Tuesday, that's why. So we can go out to DC, we can go lobby and bring some more federal and state money back home.
Yeah, I just want to mention one thing here. Absolutely, the Palmdale Parade was a great success. I know that the staff had some logistical concerns, but they were overcome, and whatever hiccups there were, weren't apparent to the public. But, you know, again, the Sheriff's Department helped us control the streets and access to Palmdale Boulevard during that event. It brings us back to that historic time when we had the parade on Palmdale Boulevard all the time. And it was a fantastic event. I've heard from a couple of business members who, I think we kind of had a concern about whether if we shut down Palmdale Boulevard on a Saturday, when is when a lot of people are shopping and so on, that that might interfere with business. But no, what I've heard is, is actually bringing more business in to some of the business people along there. We had a great AVTA holiday drive-through grocery and toy giveaway. Hundreds, and that's hundreds of automobiles went through there. That was a collaboration between AVTA, City of Lancaster, City of Palmdale, County of Los Angeles, and labor was there in great force. We had the Teamsters. We had other labor organizations there, brought the turkeys. There were fantastic toys that were given away to a lot of these children that were coming through with their families and their cars. That was a fantastic event. And on the following day, there was an event at the fairgrounds, which was amazing, Amazing Events Toy and Turkey Giveaway. That was the following day, and that was a collaboration with an organization, nonprofit, called Amazing Events. And they call attendance for that particular thing, and this was the third year, from people that are receiving, they're recipients of welfare, food stamps, unemployment benefits, the people that really, it's shown easily that they're very needy. So you could just tell the young people that were coming through, they were their parents. And that was a great event. There were many other things that I think we all attended, and we will keep just as busy in 2025, if not more. All right? With that, then we will move on to presentation by the city attorney. Do we have anything there, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have one properly agendized closed session. It's a litigation matter where we will be updating you, and at your convenience, we can recess to that closed session.
Okay, thank you. So if you wish to stick around, we'll be back in a little while. If not, well, we'll see you next time. If not, well, we'll see you next time.
Feels like they have the air on.
I don't know.
Okay, we're all back. Is there, is there a announcement by the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had a closed session, council was updated, but no reportable actions occurred.
Thank you very much. In that case, we will be adjourning the meeting to January 22, 2025 at 5 o'clock in the City Hall Council Chamber here. And tonight, the meeting will be adjourned in the memory of President Jamie Carter. Thank you all, and good night.